Given that the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a meeting, a regular meeting, on October ninth, twenty twenty-three, beginning at six P M. in Council Chambers, at eleven oh nine B Bayou Road in Mark, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. In accordance with section five five one dot one two seven B of the Texas Local Government Code, the Presiding Officer, and a quorum of the Lamarck City Council intend to be and will physically be present at eleven oh nine B Bayou Road in Mark, Texas. This location will be open to the public, and the meeting will be broadcast at this location on channel sixteen and via YouTube. The council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called to order. Kiara, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember District A. President. Councilmember District B.
Present.
Councilmember District C is not with us. Councilmember District D.
Present.
And Mayor.
Present. Thank you, Kiara. I'd like to ask Councilmember Yancy to lead us in our invocation. Councilmember Ross, if you will lead us in our pledge. I'm sorry. You did. You did just tell me that. Let's sub Kim for Ms. Ingrid Clark of the First United Methodist Church.
Good evening. Won't you bow your heads and join me in prayer? Gracious and most holy God, we come to you this evening. We thank you for being amongst your people. Lord, lead and guide us as the city leaders take on the task of leading out, discussing the issues, and making hard decisions as are needed. Give them wisdom and strength, and we pray a hedge of protection over the city of Lamarck that as we go forward as citizens with hearts for all the people, that we will make good decisions and to move in the best interest of the community. Bless all those who are gathered here this evening and be with us as we go forth. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
All right. We now have a presentation. Item four one proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Is there any persons here tonight here to receive this proclamation on Domestic Violence Awareness Month? Yes, ma'am. You may come forward.
You are with? Resource and Press Center. Your name?
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes, ma'am. Welcome, Ms. Johnson. Officer of the Mayor of the City of Lamarck, while the month of October has been designated as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, it is time to recognize, to recognize people and raise awareness about the death penalty impact of the Metta. Whereas the effect of the Metta, in your life, not only for the survivors, but for the entire community, around those who have been bitten, be it family, friends, coworkers, neighbors. Whereas this new scene, it's in our control to end coercion, personifying the connection to, to serving to violence by, by knowledge. They're ready to redirect or re-dedicate myself to the goal of eliminating that. And whereas the city of Lamarck, that this kind of abuse affects everyone, about residents, men, women, children, of all races, living, uncoated, and where community organizations, such as the useful and crisis in Galveston County, prove to be an invaluable resource to those in our community who are in need of assistance via hotline and various needs, such as legal, residential, and their and now therefore with the mayor and council, by the virtue of the authority vested by the City of Lamarck, we hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty-three as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. City of Lamarck encourage all citizens of Lamarck to recognize this month by seeking education regarding the Metta. That's one world with its mind and the city of the City of Lamarck on this nine day of October twenty twenty-three. We are more than welcome to serve there. But Mark, it's time to bring even more awareness to the Metta.
I just want to make sure everything, um, and probably as both, um, the great comments that I was doing. Welcome. Hi, I'm Lucy Corleone. Um, we're the Research and Marketing Center. Uh, here's my experience, um, with self, um, so, uh, we just want to thank the community of more, um, Mayor, the listeners, here on, for the opportunity to confer, um, so they can, uh, communicate more about the things that might come into the community.
Thank you all. Item five, citizens' participation limited to three minutes per person. Uh, I think our city attorney has, uh, some words that he'd like to remind us of this time.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would just, um, iterate that this is the citizens' time to, um, come and address their counsel, voice any concerns they have, um, and direct those towards, um, the council and/or to me or Ms. Nance. But the dais is all.
Very good. Thank you, guys. Item five, citizens' participation. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business has signed up, may speak to council, limited to three minutes. If wishing to speak, you may give the mayor or the presiding officer your full legal name, address, and item you wish to speak about. Compliance with the Texas Opens Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Uh, person, personal attacks will not be allowed, and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Press star six to mute yourself and unmute yourself if you are participating via telephone. Uh, press the, uh, microphone icon in the lower portion of your screen if you are visiting with us uh, on the Zoom platform via smartphone, tablet, or computer. Uh, if you're here with us in person tonight, you may approach, uh, let's, uh, there it is, the, uh, podium to the center aisle. Uh, give, uh, council your name, address, and you will be heard at this time. Kyle, are there any persons online wishing to speak? Very good. We move now to those that are here with us present. Cassandra Lafferty. Welcome, Ms. Cassandra. Name and address for the record.
Cassandra Lafferty, thirteen oh two Ross. Um, I'm here because I came last month about the same issue. Um, I had faith that the city council was going to address or that the city manager and I had spoke with my city manager, I had spoke with my, my district's councilman, and I was informed that it would be taken care of. In August, I believe, I'm sorry about the dates, I had a huge leak in my yard and it had flooded my whole yard. I had come up here to address, I had come, I tried to be proactive. I came to the city to try to address the issue. They would not adjust my bill. So I had to come to city council to talk about it. Um, I was informed that it would be taken care of. On the second of October, I get this notice on my door that said I had high consumption. So I went and checked my meter just to make sure that I didn't have another leak. I called the city of Lamarck and let them know my meter's not running. Um, and they told me, oh, it's from last month. It was from the month that I had already come up here to speak about. I had spoke with Ms. Henderson. She told me that it was going to be taken care of and that they were going to adjust the bill. A couple of days later, I get my bill in the mail, three hundred and forty-seven dollars. When my average bill is about ninety-seven dollars, anywhere from eighty-nine to ninety-seven dollars. I call Ms. Henderson again. She says assures me that it's going to be taken care of. So I tried to come up on Friday, Thursday, or Friday to come pay my bill. Still, they're telling me that it's three hundred and forty-seven dollars. I'm, I'm assured then that it's going to be taken care of. So today I called to find out if they had adjusted my bill yet. I was told that they did adjust my bill to two hundred and forty-seven dollars. My average bill is anywhere from eighty-nine to ninety-seven dollars. I've never gone over a hundred dollars. So when I asked, that's not my average bill. Like, if you take my average, I did, I made an A in algebra too, so I can average and do the median. So then Ms. Henderson tells me that they take the last six months and then they times it by the rate and all this, and that I only qualify for the hundred dollar adjustment. Why is that? I don't understand how I'm being charged to almost triple what my water bill was because I had a leak. I understand that I need to pay whatever my water was on the average. But my thing is, I tried to be proactive. I tried to come up here. I tried to speak with my city councilperson. I tried to speak with the city manager. I tried to speak with the water company. If my bill was on auto pay, y'all would have just got three hundred and fifty dollars from me, and I would be battling on how to get my money back. I'm not just speaking for me. I'm speaking for elderly people who can't come up here. I'm speaking for other people who will just pay it and not try to fight it. I'm speaking for everyone behind me whose water bills are outrageous. It is a problem. So I have, I'm just trying to get this settled, and I shouldn't have to come to two council meetings to get a water bill settled. That, that's ridiculous. Nobody should have to do that. I'm literally, I'm going to school and I should be studying right now instead of having to deal with my water bill. So I have my average bills. I have the last couple of months. I have the bill that came in. The person didn't even knock on my door to try to talk to me. They just slid this on my door and then walked away. So that's what I'm here for, because this is ridiculous. So like I said, I'm here not just for me, but for everyone else who doesn't come up here.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Cassandra. Mister Joe Camacho. Welcome, Mr. Camacho. Name and address for the record.
The Joe Camacho, twenty-five Rondo Stretch. Uh, I'd like to bring a, uh, issue forward regarding self-storage facilities. Last week, I was, uh, called by an owner who owns such a facility. Uh, I've made arrangements to, uh, to have a camper, a pull behind camper there. Now, the reason why he called me is because he stated that the city had contacted him and said that he was in violation of codes because of, uh, parking boats, trailers, RVs on the premises. Now, this is a self-storage facility, and it rather new. I think, I don't think it's even a year and a half old. Now, it concerns me because now I'm going to have, they gave them till the end of the month to notify the tenants. Now I have to go and look for another facility. Now, if these codes are governed through all the facilities, storage facilities in Lamarck, then I'm going to have to go next door to Hitchcock or somewhere else to make arrangements for that. Now, the concern, it'll be, for me, it's an inconvenience. However, I think it's going to reflect on the city if we have codes that are, uh, forbidding the parking of these vehicles on those storage. I cannot, I could go around the city and you'd see the same type of facilities, and if they have space, there's going to be a boat, there's going to be a trailer, there's going to be an RV there. Now, the reason what they're telling them is that that is considered out, outdoor storage, open storage. So I tried to look at the, uh, at the codes, and the only thing I could come across that read was more likely just a residence, but not particularly. And it's probably there. I just didn't see it regarding, uh, those type of facilities. Now, I would respectfully request the council, the attorney, if they would look at the, at the language and see how that's going to affect these facilities. Because there's other type of facilities. I think there's a very large one down in your district, uh, James, down itself that you look there, and it's full of outdoor parking of these type of vehicles. Now, in a time that we're seeking to grow our city and, uh, try to attract businesses, I personally don't think that we should put any barriers and relook at the, uh, at the code and see if the language is going to cause an issue. Because now, when I park it there, it's my little way of stimulating the local economy. If I go to Hitchcock, now I'm stimulating their economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Camacho. Joseph Lowry. Welcome, Joseph. Name and address for the record, please.
Joseph Lowry, twenty-five oh three Cedar Drive. Again, uh, Mr. Bell, I want to give you the opportunity to step down and resign for, for, uh, not living in the city of Lamarck per charter. Um, the other thing I want to speak about is the, uh, this ridiculous claim of lynch mobs and and all this nonsense about racism in the community, because it's coming from one per, one person in the community, and that's you. And you're heading at the answer.
Joe, Joseph, Joseph.
And it's the fight.
Joseph, Joseph, I'm going to ask you to not, I'm going to ask you to address the council as a whole.
I just did.
Oh, I, address the council as a whole.
It's coming from one council.
Per the city, I, I understand what, how you feel. Address the council as a whole per the instructions of the city attorney. Thank you. You may proceed. Please make sure he has, uh, the amount of time he should have. Thank you. Proceed, just.
So, uh, anyways, the racism is coming from one person, and, uh, I'd like to speak about the body cam footage uh, from July fourth, from a couple of years ago, or about a year ago. Uh, first of all, the officers did an extraordinary job, uh, at handling, uh, an irate citizen that unfortunately happened to be one of our council members. Uh, my belief is there was, uh, multiple, uh, crimes committed in that video as Aragon knows, and, uh, hopefully he takes action.
Joseph.
File some charges on that.
Counsel, counsel.
And, uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jess. Mister Richard Coles. Welcome, Mr. Coles. Name and address for the record, please.
Audi, one four one three Austin. Last name is C O L E S. Richard Coles, Jr. I've been resident of Lamarck for twenty years, and that puts me in District B. Um, I would like to publicly thank the Public Works Department for fixing the water leak that was just west of, uh, it was on Magnolia, just west of the lake intersection. Although we were without water for a day or two, hey, it happens. I understand it. I'm not complaining. What I am complaining about is the condition of Austin as a street overall. The north end, there's a really bad hole right there in the middle of the intersection. They recently patched it with, or not patched, they poured a bunch of some kind of white rock about the size of golf balls in the hole, and that's been driven over. The hole is back. The rocks have been getting knocked out. There really needs to be filled in with asphalt. They recently patched a big area next to that hole. They left that open. Don't understand. Also, south of Magnolia toward Houston Drive South, uh, that street has been patched and patched and patched all over again. It'd be nice if you guys could get state or federal funding to chew up that entire street and redo it. Now, that's what I would, would like to see. Also, the ditches on the east side of the thirteen and fourteen hundred blocks of Austin, they're getting overgrown. They need to be dug out. Now, realize hurricane season is over, but please try to get it done before next hurricane season. And if you need to train somebody to use that thing, I'm available because I'm looking for work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Believe that, that's all of our citizens' participation. We move now to item six, minutes. Uh, six one, regular city council minutes, uh, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. I will entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Some of.
Are there any additions, uh, or corrections? Hearing no more call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven, ordinances. Discussion possible action regarding, regarding approving seven one. Ordinance number letter O dash two zero two three dash zero zero one two. Amending the city's zoning map and comprehensive plan by changing the zoning district for attractive land, uh, commonly known as one thousand five Bayou Road. Counsel, I want to entertain a motion.
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, discussion.
Just to be clear, the, this address is the the former floral business up here, is that accurate?
Yes, Mayor, pro temp.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, it's, it's a former House of Interiors building.
House of Interiors.
Right next to the library, yes, sir.
Right, okay.
I think the applicant is here.
He sure is.
Yeah, look at, see her, okay.
What's your name? Yeah.
Thanks, Kevin.
Michael Craigan. Uh, reversing my father, Sumner B. Craigan. He's the owner of, uh, property one oh five Bio Road. Uh, is it, that's operated as a retail building since nineteen seventy-seven. Uh, he's in the process. The House of Interiors has moved out. He's trying to lease the property or perhaps sell it. Uh, in that process, we found out that the property is zoned residential, uh, which was a surprise to us since it's been a retail establishment for forty-six years. So we're just asking to get it zoned, uh, basically have it codified and zoned to what it's been used for all these years.
Michael, you're, um, Scott's brother?
I was. Yeah, I am.
He was a good friend of mine.
Yeah.
Of course, and I remember you as well with the traveling.
Yeah.
And your dad's still alive?
He is. Ninety-four years old. He would have come, but he wouldn't have been able to hear you.
Well, God bless you.
I, I just want to tell you what that space has meant for our area. A space where you can find nice items, and it is a beloved space
Yep.
uh, next to the library. So I hope and pray that whoever gets it will be just as reputable as how Cemetery was.
Well, I appreciate that. My dad built that building and had his clothing store there for many years as well before Wanda took it over. We did just put a new roof on it and have upgraded the canopy. So, yeah, we're trying to, uh, trying to dress it up a little bit, and so to somebody who'll take care of it and be in a, a good addition to Lamarck.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Also, do we have any, uh, further questions for Mister Garcia or any further discussion? Hearing no more call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eight, resolutions. Unless otherwise specified, the city manager is authorized to execute all necessary documents upon final approval by the city attorney. Eight one, resolution number letter R dash two zero two three dash zero zero six three. Construct a new water line and easement of orange and prune between Tenth and Eleventh Avenue. I will entertain a motion.
Some mood.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do.
Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, Rick, please. As we're constructing or, or doing the, the repairs, especially what I call Old Town Lamarck, right? Um, and Chief Merriman is here. We know that in, in our Old Town Lamarck, we have a challenge with regard to the, the distance between the water, the fire hydrants, correct, chief? And, um, about nineteen, I think, uh, early seventies, the, the code was adjusted, and we have a shorter spacing between fire hydrants. In Old Town Lamarck, we have a wider uh, spacing. I think it's still what, thousand feet or something?
Five hundred feet.
The present one is five hundred or the old one?
The, the present one's five.
That's right, but the old one was a thousand.
It could have been thousand.
It was a thousand. Okay, so my request is as appropriate when these repairs are being conducted, especially on the water line, and it's, and it's permissible. If, if a water line, if a fire hydrant is appropriate, given you know, the, uh, spacing, let's go ahead and put in an additional fire hydrant there for the protection of our residents in those neighborhoods. That's all my request.
Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing no more call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eight two, resolution number letter R dash two zero two three dash zero zero six four. Uh, gen item description, consider recommendation to authorize the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement between the city of Lamarck and the county of Galveston for the city's continued participation in the Galveston County Auto Crimes Task Force. I will entertain a motion.
Some mood.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Chief, you may, uh, you may proceed.
Mayor, member of city council, and, uh, she mentioned on here, but, um, the agenda form is self-explanatory. We've been doing this nine times. We're on the tenth year right now. But we have agent Aaron Skaggs right here, uh, and his boss, Lieutenant Hal Barrow. But we have agent Aaron Skaggs right here and his boss Lieutenant Hal Barrow, who is in charge of the Auto Crimes Task Force. It is very, very productive. You can see up there, that's for the year of twenty-two and twenty-three. And below that, you see what Aaron has done for Lamarck or his predecessor. BMV on the far left there, that's burglary of motor vehicles. We've cleared, he's cleared nineteen and twenty-three, fifty-five and twenty-two. It's a, it's definitely a force multiplier. I mean, if Aaron works there, I think they got about eight or nine total. And if he works the case, he's got all the others helping him. So it's really great for the city of Lamarck. And I'd like to see this continue. The agenda item lists all the pluses. We actually pay his salary. I'm sorry, they 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 pay the salary. We pay the fringe. We pay the for the the gas and oil and maintenance of the vehicle. They provide the vehicle. It's great for the city. I would like to continue. I have thought, I've not seen anything wrong with it. It's very productive. So with that, Mayor and council members, I hope you say yes.
Chief, the, when we talk about auto crimes, are we only talking about the theft? Or are we talking about any sort of damage to a vehicle within the city limits of Lamarck?
Well, it's not really for crash purposes. It's mainly for theft of vehicles, burglary of burglary of vehicles, fraud, so forth. I'd like to have Lieutenant Barrett to talk on that because it's very detailed. They solve other cases besides cars. It could start with a car being stolen or burglarized, and then it could lead to burglaries of buildings. So it's really a productive mechanism. If you if you don't mind it, I'd like a Lieutenant Barrett who's sitting in the back to come up and work on that, okay? Hal?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Lieutenant, would you give your full name and position for the record, please?
As Lieutenant Harold Barrow, I'm with the Gauze County Sheriff's Office. I'm assigned as commander of the Auto Crimes Task Force.
Thanks, sir.
Your question is about auto crimes?
Yes.
Anything with dealerships, used car, new cars, financial crimes. You name anything involving a car as in purchasing thefts. We have a lot of bin switches going on, like GMCs and Chevrolets right now. It's the cartels working from the border, which I know the border issue is going on. They've moved into Houston. They're coming down to the refinery stealing these cars, doing bin switches. Matter of fact, Aaron's working on a case now where it's tied into the cartels and they're reprogramming these vehicles and selling them. To give you an example, what's going on is they'll steal a vehicle, the refinery, they'll do a bin switch on it, they'll post it on Facebook, Marketplace or Craigslist. And some of your Hispanics in the community and other people, they'll post that for like thirty thousand dollars, or you got an eighty thousand dollar truck. They'll gather up their cash money. They'll meet them, pay them cash money for these vehicles. Take it, they have to get inspected from us, which if you see the sixty-eight inspections, we do these inspections. We find out it's been a bin switch. We recover the car. They've been spent thirty thousand dollars cash to go on the money. That money's being funneled to the cartels. So it's really a big organized crime deal and the collaboration between us, DPS, other law courts, like Houston PD Auto Theft is statewide, the Auto Crime Task Force is statewide. So we have a lot of communication going on. It's it's kind of hard to explain how in-depth it goes. But it's tied into drugs, it's tied into human trafficking. Does that kind of answer your question?
Well, you you opened the door for a lot of other areas and I'm just going to behave myself and not say anything, okay? But I guess my focus is we had an effort here that I encouraged on a program to mark up our catalytic converters.
Yes, sir.
We had that first effort here at the Walmart about six months ago, I think. And I'd asked the chief during National Night Out Saturday, to what extent had we had continued reports of thefts of the catalytic converters, which would be considered a auto crime, correct?
Correct.
And chief, your response was what? Zero, zero, gone down or zero?
It's zero. They have pulled down, but it's gone down quite a bit. Hal will tell you that.
Okay.
Yeah. The Catholic earth has have reduced in price. I'm saying the price, I'm thinking of the metal companies, the money has come down on the value of metal. So they're not stealing as much. The program where you came up with, or whoever came up with it, marketing on there doing that statewide also.
Yeah.
I think we, we have one scheduled coming up.
Yes.
To do it again. Matter of fact, I was at the MVCBA, what was the Tabby Conference? They mentioned Lamarck and doing that program in that the other day, and it was the Houston PD that mentioned y'all.
Yeah.
So it is, it's working.
Very good. And that's, and that's the messaging, at least on my part, that just like our friends in Friendswood are known for, don't speed in Friendswood. Let's make sure that we send a message out, and we started with the crime program that was introduced by the mayor as well, too. Let's not, don't come to Lamarck with your craziness about damaging property or or stealing or or other sorts of violent crime as well, too. So I appreciate that.
And I agree with you. And what happens with y'all participating in this? Let's say you have a rash of car thefts that go in the city of Lamarck. Y'all's agent to the police department, there's seven or eight of us that will come help and assist in that. It's such a specialized unit identifying these cars and stuff. You get eight people for one, and we're reimbursing the money for the salary. So all y'all have is that fringe benefit. So it's a plus. And like the chief said, it's a force multiplier, and we appreciate the city of Lamarck participating for all these years that they have. A matter of fact, I think that was one of the original ones when the task force started over thirty years ago. So.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
Any more questions?
So I was asked earlier today, is there any way we can get like quarterly statistics on thefts and recoveries and such for the city of Lamarck and Gauze County, whatever we're we're participating in with this? That way our citizens can see at least on a quarterly basis how our money's going.
Yes, Councilmember Ross. We, you know, we have the CompStat briefing every month, and we'll include that in it, just like we do the organized crime task force stats. So quarterly, Aaron, Aaron goes to the meeting, CompStat meeting, briefings, and he'll provide that to us. So we'll we'll be current on that to meet your needs. Okay.
Any more questions? Thank you. We will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item nine, city manager's report. Mr. Garcia? I don't see anything listed on your report. Do you have anything to add add at this time?
Mayor, just to remind everybody of the upcoming events that we have in the city, whether now or at for items of good of the order, to remind everybody of the two that are coming up pretty quickly, being Bayou Fest on Saturday, October twenty-first, and also our Chuck or Treat on Thursday, October twenty-sixth. If anybody hasn't raised, I believe the flyers are out in the back of the room. And I also know we have our upcoming Small Business Summit that's also coming up on October seventeenth. That includes our report for this meeting. Thank you.
Very good. Let's move now to the, before we get to adjournment, we don't have anything on the executive session. Let's move now to the items for the Good of the Order, otherwise known as council comments. And so let's guess proceed with Councilmember Ross.
All right. We got I was told on Saturday that our last cleanup was done in District D. We did almost ninety-nine hundred and fifty pounds of trash, picked up over thirty-six volunteers. Thursday, we heard about Santa Fe's little bust, and I was kind of hoping because during our community, first community watch meeting, we had talked about some some activity that was being seen in District D. So I was happy to find out Friday when I got home that that issue was taken care of. We all went to T M L, had a good time. Me and JB did a little economic development roundtable, some public works initiative stuff. Then understanding like how our electricity bills work, found out some good information that's coming down for the cities to be able to help with that. Saw a great poll on Facebook on whether I should resign because I was wearing a heart monitor for two weeks. I let you know I'm doing that because I'm going out to help and fight a fire with the fire department November second, doing training with our men and women in the fire department. Because I'm fifty now. Been about fifteen years since the last time I did fire training. Want to make sure I'm not a casualty in it instead of actually getting some training done. So I hope that alleviates thinking that I'm trying not to die up here. I'm just making sure they're not doing a fireman's carry out of a burning building with me as I'm doing training with them. Thank you. That's all I have.
Miss, yes.
It's October. Nice weather, and this is the month that we celebrate Lamarck being seventy years old. So this is the month that we celebrate the founding of Lamarck, and that's what all the cookies and all of this is for after the meeting. It's for you, for us to celebrate who we are as a city and our identity as the city of Lamarck. October twenty-first, you know, it's Bayou Fest, get your ticket, come out, and let's have a time of unity. We can all get be on one accord when it comes to celebrating our unique city. We are the second fastest growing city in Galveston County. We are number six out of ten for real estate development outside of Houston. We have development coming, and I'm going to stay positive because that's what we do. We get the job done. And that's what we're working on. And that's why we were elected to be here, and that is to serve and to improve our city. Are we perfect? No. But the good news is that we're working on it. That's the good news. To everyone that came out September thirtieth for the cleanup. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We had fun on September thirtieth. We learned some new things about District A. We talked, the town hall meeting, we thank you for those that came. We've got to do a better job, city manager, of making sure that people are aware of that. My phone is talking back to me. But thank you so much for those of you that are joining with us to improve the city that are not just saying what's wrong, but bringing solutions to the table and making us aware because we need fresh eyes to see what we need to do to make our city better. And that's why we serve. That's why we're here to make our city better. And so we had a great time this week at T M L learning about things that we can do to bring our cities together. Because of our national climate, it is impacting our local climate, but we can be better than that. We are intelligent. We are professional. And we know what it takes to bring everyone together. I am a teacher. That's my profession. And I look to teach and I look to to help. And I want to say thank you to our councilmen who have been very supportive and to our staff as well, who have been very productive. There are two things you can be in life. You can be a performer or you can be a producer. There are some people who are just that, performers. But I choose to be a producer. Look at the data and let the data speak for what this council has done, has done and what we plan on doing in the future. But thank you so much for those of you that really work on bringing us together to move forward as a city. Thank you, Mayor, for the time.
Thank you, Miss. Mr. Potem?
Yes. Number one, I want to make sure that, Mr. City Manager, that the items that were spoken about during or follow up, we didn't make that point. And and also would like as an agenda item, let's have a discussion because I'm very confused at this point on our adjustment policy with regard to water. I've heard various different explanations of that policy, and they all seem to be a new one. Let's make sure we get this just in simple black and white so it's easily understood. So a discussion on that area. Mr. Coles, that your district, I formerly was your representative in B, but it's now District C. But I'm still here to help you in any way, and I took note on on those items. See, you're in C now, in that area, the Highlands area, is 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 now in C. And the updated maps are at the website, if anybody, just to be reminded, they are there as well, too. As was mentioned, the T M L conference is the municipal league, which is the various cities in Houston, I mean, in the state of Texas. It's outstanding to see the number of smaller cities in attendance. I will say this comment, Mayor and my other council members, each year that I've gone, we seem to convene at a larger facility. And so I really say, even though it was connected, I I think easily it was a three mile walk from here to the other, and three miles for me is is a long way. So but it was outstanding information. And speaking of potholes, every year, one of the things that I most enjoy about the municipal league conference is the new technology, the new products that are out there. And we saw some products along with the League City Mayor Nick Long and I were demonstrated a new asphalt pothole product out there that is that that has extends a life significantly and avoids that that challenge that we have when we fix potholes. Where about a month after the pothole is fixed, it's now back again, right? And 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 also, I know my fellow councilpersons and I are certainly going to be looking at how we can facilitate. I know I'll be urging it at least to identify the worst street in each of the districts somehow and see if we can focus on some sort of repair program aggressive with regard to that. The the National Night Out, outstanding. It was always great to be out there, at least when it occurred for us at Saturday. But more importantly, you know what represented for me was an opportunity to listen to our members of the Fire Department and the Police Department. I did not know that our Fire Department EMS, including our fire chief, our own fire chief, have have actually in their roles, have given, I shouldn't say given birth, what's the proper word, chief? Has assisted in giving birth, delivering, delivering babies along the freeway and other and other areas of our city. That was amazing to hear the stories. I think in your case, you've you've delivered, assisted in deliveries in seventeen times, as I recall, you mentioned to me. And with regard to the members of our Police Department, it was outstanding to hear them talking about their 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 love of being in the department. And and that was also very, very encouraging. And plus to hear what other needs that they think that they might have in terms of equipment, things that might make the job a bit easier. So that was certainly that activity Saturday night was most enlightening for me. And I appreciate it, Mayor.
James, would you do me a favor? And you see that blue, that blue document here on the table? Would you pass that to Karen for me? Just one, just one. Thank you. Certainly, we wanted to acknowledge every event in October. Several have been acknowledged, but I believe there is also an event in October where there's some, there is painting pumpkins, I believe, with police officers. Truck or treat, I believe Caesar mentioned trunk or treat, as well as several painting opportunities and activities with our with our parks board, with our volunteer parks board. You can access this information in detail on our website. But October is a very, very, very busy month for our community, a very exciting month, month for our community. Our city's birthday, and we are, we're definitely putting our best foot forward. I look forward to seeing you at any and all of those events if you can make it, if your family can make it. We definitely want to have you as a part of all of these wonderful, wonderful celebrations. I wanted to acknowledge National Night Out. I believe there were eight to nine locations between the two days. Thank you for your participation. Those locations that we were able to make, there was a sense of community. Many of those, members of those communities were proud members of those communities. And they were appreciative of the opportunity to get to know one another. I enjoyed, as Mayor Potem said earlier, I. Uh, I enjoyed, as uh Mayor Protem uh said earlier, I enjoyed the opportunity to listen. Anytime we can be in the community as uh representatives of the community, the most valuable opportunity we have is to listen. And so we listened to a lot of uh the victories and many of uh the challenges of our community members, and we thank you for the opportunity to listen. Um, we did attend uh the TML conference uh last week, it was uh definitely an informative experience. I believe our team is stronger for it. Uh, I had the opportunity to sit in with uh Councilmember Ross on that public work session. Uh, it opened our eyes to a lot of the training opportunities uh that that are out there with the American Public Works Association, an organization that I had never heard of, uh, but an organization that can prove to be beneficial not only to uh Lamarck and to our public works uh our outfit, but but as well as uh many of those public works departments uh in our county. And so we look forward to engaging uh them on uh on a a statewide level to see if we can we can bring them down to help us to train and to learn and to grow our public works department. Uh, certainly, there was many uh many uh training opportunities for social media management. Uh, learning how to respond on social media, learning how to interpret responses on social media. Uh, as well as, I believe I sat in with uh Caesar, uh, a financial class. A class that talked to us about making uh finance uh and financial language easier for our community members to understand. Uh, finance is always difficult to understand, uh, and if there's something that we can do to make it easier uh for us to digest and understand, uh, certainly, I would want to do that. I believe we we had a lot of good information in that class, Caesar, and uh we're going to bring some of those ideas back, and hopefully those ideas uh can benefit our city. I wanted to say this as we close uh comments tonight. Uh, there is, you all have probably received in uh in your mail, uh, a document uh from the city of Lamarck, and it's uh called a quarterly progress report. It's a quarterly progress report. Uh, this is an attempt by this council uh to inform you of our workings. Uh, in this document, you will find the council, the city manager, uh, and you will find uh the highlights of every uh action this council takes officially uh on this dais, or actions that uh the administration uh has taken uh it within their purview uh to make our city better. And so this is our effort uh to put in your hands another piece of information so that you can become informed. The more information we have, uh, the better we are for it. Uh, there's nothing wrong with information uh and education. And so we want to make you aware of this, we're excited about it, we hope to get your feedback on it. Uh, there's nothing further, council, I have enjoyed you tonight. Yes, sir, Mr. Ross.
So uh, we missed one thing, uh, tomorrow is Founder's Day. That's the day the city was was founded, make sure we all enjoy and try to at least be nice for one day to each other in the city. Come on.
Very good, thank you for that, Mr. Ross. Anything further? Hearing nothing, I will uh uh, we, I'm I'm sorry, uh, we cannot, uh, we can't uh engage with the audience until we adjourn. We we can do that, we can do that. Could you please give us the uh uh a recital of the official website address?
Yes, sir, it's going to be www dot city of yes, it's going to be www dot city of Lamarck dot O R G.
Thank you for that, Ms. Cole, thank you for that, Kiara.
And that's just, that's H T P P, it's not a secure site?
Yeah.
It is a secure site?
No, it's not a secure site.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.